I know it's 6:30. I'm just getting some texts. We've got one of our board members walking in shortly, so we'll wait just a few minutes. Get our last our last person on and then we'll get moving. Kyle? Could you run down and let Victoria in? Or sorry, now Victoria Alicia in? You might be the closest. She's at the administration. You're right. Thanks.
Yeah, I heard you. Go here. Thanks.
Appreciate everybody's patience. We should be.
Quinn, if you could hear me, Quinn, I see you as an attendee. Just a quick note, we we normally don't have our our school representative speak in in June or July, but definitely want to give you the opportunity if you're prepared or would like to. So if you I've allowed you to talk if you'd like to to speak in our normal in your normal slot, we'd be happy to have you. So let let me know if you'd like to, and we'll we'll make sure to have a spot for you to speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I can just introduce myself if everyone would like that.
Great. Well, we'll we'll have you in the the board section and Marley just make a note to and we'll allow Quinn to talk.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Quinn.
All right. You know what? Why don't we go ahead with our call to order and you can just, Mr. Smith, you can just mark in when Ms. Mitchell is able to
Certainly.
join it. I'm sure she's she'll be on shortly. All right, so. Start with my language. Okay. All right. Thank you. In accordance with Ohio revised code 121.22, House Bill 97 and House Bill 404, I hereby call to order the Board of Education of the Bexley City School District Regular Board Meeting for Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. Thank you. Mr. Smith, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Varno?
Here.
Ms. Minio?
Sorry, I'm here.
Don't see Ms. Mitchell yet. Ms. Powers?
Here.
And Ms. Snowden?
Here. Thank you. Oh, okay.
I'd like to see. Ms. Mitchell, can you hear me for roll call?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Sorry I was late.
No, I know. It's and it's hard when you don't have don't have the key to the building. All right, so I have a motion to approve our meeting minutes from April 27th, April 28th, May 4th, and May 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any changes or notes that need to be made? All right, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign? Thank you. That motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign? That motion carries as well. Thank you. So we're going to get started tonight with our board updates. As far as policy is concerned, we have just second readings on tonight. Most of them are legally just legally required. We've read them all last month and nothing has changed. Our board retreat will be August 8th, 2021, from 12 to 4. We're still looking at a location, most likely offsite. And I just wanted to report in on the change for all of us, a positive COVID change in that we are going to be from here forward having our meetings live as we have in the past pre-COVID days in the building and community room. And in part, that is because House Bill 404 and 197 are expiring on June 30th. So we still, I think it's been a positive experience to have this livestream. You know, there were some meetings last July that we had over 300 people and are listening to our meetings, and that's a great way for us to reach our our community. So we've had conversations about what that'll look like going forward, how we can livestream. And our tech department is working with us. So what we're going to try next in for July meetings, our July 6th meeting is our first live meeting. We'll be back in community room. And we're going to use equipment that we purchased a couple of years ago when we started the recording our meetings. And so we'll see how that goes for a month or two. We also have a quote in or a request in for a quote to have a company do it, like the one that did our graduation, which was fantastic, and see how much that would cost. So we're still looking into it. And we'll know more after our July and August meeting what what our needs are. And I would just remind everybody now and in next month that we're going to need to speak clearly into our microphones to make sure that the livestream equipment works and is an experience that is beneficial to our community members. So that's that. And the last thing I just wanted to send out a couple of thank yous. I know this time of year, there's a huge amount of work that goes on, especially for administration and Mary and Kyle. Lots of moving parts, lots of people coming and going. It's an exciting time, but I know it's also a stressful time. So I just wanted to to send my appreciation and the board's appreciation to all the hard work that's been going on here in the building the last several weeks. I also wanted to thank our teachers, the teaching staff for the amazing summer school options. We talked about this before, but we're approving a lot of them tonight, just the the actual payment for them. And they each have, each of the teachers have their the name of their class listed, and it's really a very impressive, rich, and as as I think Ms. Abraham said, joyful group of classes. So it makes it makes me really pleased to get to vote on those tonight. So that is it for me for updates, and that sends us on to Ms. Powers.
Thank you very much, Marley. So first, the Bexley Rec Department, since our last board meeting, the Bexley Rec Department has met twice on May 20th and again this week on June 2nd last week. The May 20th meeting was a special meeting to review and evaluate updated plans due to changing COVID-19 guidance and protocols. The pool opened on Memorial Day weekend with greater capacity than had originally been planned, so we were excited about that. It's a real pleasure to have the community have that pool available to it this summer, so I'm really pleased. The pool is currently limiting the number of patrons to 550 at any given time. They are doing a live count of people who are there, so you can look at that on their website and see if they're anywhere near capacity. The high school senior party was in the new Jeffrey Mansion space, which was really, the space looks fantastic, and I was really glad that space could be used for that this year for our seniors. In the fall, Jeffrey Care will be started earlier than normal. It's being moved to more closely aligned with our calendar. So Jeffrey Care will start the Monday after we begin our school day Thursday, August 19th, and Jeffrey Care will start the Monday after that. So that's very much appreciated that they are aligning closer to our start date. Jeffrey Summer Camp started yesterday. The Rec Department is working very hard to make as much recreation available to our community over the summer as possible. So really appreciate that work. Franklin County School Board Alliance, the School Board Alliance met on May 13th. I was not able to attend that meeting, but the topics discussed included the new Backpack Bill proposing expansion of the education voucher system and what has been introduced as House Bill 322 now, which proposes to limit the teaching of certain current events and concepts regarding, say, race and sex in public schools. The Franklin County School Board Alliance meets again this weekend, and I know there will be a lot of attention paid to the state senate's changes related to what was the fair school funding plan. So I will give an update on that at our next meeting. The Treasurer's Finance Advisory Committee met on Monday of this week. Treasurer Smith introduced Dr. Fine to all of the members of that committee, and he then took the committee through a presentation of our May 2021 five-year forecast. He did an overview of the federal grants that are received by the district as a result of the CARES Act, the American Recovery Plan, and ESSER, which is the elementary and secondary schools emergency release funds that come from the federal government. And he did a general discussion of levy planning, and so the committee had a chance to think about levy planning. The committee plans to meet again in the fall and will, you know, be looking at that a little more closely to go forward. In addition, this morning, the treasurer convened a public Zoom meeting inviting community input into the planning for the use of those CARES Act and ESSER dollars. So he outlined the funds that we have received and the funds that he anticipates that we will receive and the areas of actual and planned expenditure. As Marley noted, it has been a very, very busy spring for our treasurer, and I'm really grateful for Kyle's leadership, his dedication, and his hard work on behalf of the district. I also want to add a few other thank yous. I want to give a shout out to everyone who planned and participated in this year's graduation ceremony. It was awesome to be able to watch our seniors graduate. It's been such a difficult year, but there was a lot of joy in our stadium that morning. A lot of cold weather, too, but but it was really a pleasure to be there. Dr. Amy Acton's speech was wonderful and inspiring, and I loved being able to watch the students think to thank her for what she said as they came through the receiving line. I really, really loved that. I was honored to be able to sit among the teachers and staff who were giving out the diplomas. It just made me feel great about what we have going on here in our district. We are so fortunate to have such great teachers and staff, and I was reminded of that following the last day of school last week when I heard from students and parents alike about their appreciation for the dedication of our teachers and staff to the success of our students. So thank you to the teachers and staff and administration who have made this year the very best that it could be. I want to publicly thank Mary Davis, Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent. She is the kindest and most positive person and has been a huge support as we've been through many changes over the years that she has been here, and she will be greatly missed here in Bexley. And finally, I want to publicly thank Dr. Good. Dr. Good has stepped up to lead us as interim superintendent in the middle of a pandemic, has been such a gift to us. I'm so grateful for his calm and thoughtful leadership, his openness, and for all that he has done to support our district through this year. He is now going to continue to support us as we transition to Dr. Fine's leadership. Dr. Good, thank you so much. And that's all I have tonight.
Mr. Varno?
Thank you. I I'll start off by echoing what Victoria said about Dr. Good. Getting to know Dr. Good over the last, what, seven or eight months and his dedication and his and the way that he's handled what we've been going through in the transition, especially in the middle of the year, having to have an interim superintendent as well as hiring a new superintendent and his leadership in that and in many other things, and then helping with Dr. Fine's transition has been invaluable. So thank you as well, Dr. Good. Also with Mary Davis, I actually had a note here. Victoria stole my thunder on that, but I want to add to the thunder that Mary has been Mary's been such a pleasant person every time I've been up there, back when I was president, when things were going on and we had to put things last minute. She's always been positive, willing to help, willing to be there. And not only from a professional standpoint, from a personal standpoint, she's going to be missed greatly, I'm sure. And specifically by me, the two years that I was president, she was invaluable as well with with how much she assisted me and with Dr. Miller, having to do numerous things on the fly. So thank you, Mary. In regard to a couple of with technology, we haven't had a meeting since the last school board meeting that I reported out. But I would encourage, I know that the BEF is still looking for donations, still a little bit short of our goal, so anyone that's available or listening, please consider giving donating to the BEF for our one-to-one, which again has been through this last year, especially something that, you know, we had to get moving quickly and donations, small or large, are greatly appreciated. In regard to negotiations, I'll touch on that quickly. As as the board knows, we have on our agenda under three letter O, the tentative agreement that was approved by the BEA membership. I also want to note that there will be some schedule changes, school year schedule changes for the teachers, and those will be incorporated into our our calendars as well, and all of that is part of the the agenda that we all have had. I also want to thank Dr. Good and Dr. Williams and Kyle and Mr. Smith for when we were doing negotiations, as as many know, sometimes these can be difficult, but it was great working with them and the insight that they provided really helps for us as a board to have that insight and experience. I also want to thank the BEA leadership for professional, sometimes not easy discussions, but professional, straightforward, and you know, a collegial atmosphere, and sometimes when it's not not easy to do. And so I wanted to thank the BEA leadership for doing that and willing to come back and 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 having to where we've gotten today with with our agreement that the, again, the BEA has, the membership has approved, and if we approve, then we have a three-year contract in place. We've also started negotiating with OPEC with our with our non-teaching staff, our non-certified staff. So we started that, I think it was last week. So we think we're on a good good trajectory for that. So hopefully soon we will have a contract. Once we get some things hammered out, we'll have a contract before the board for approval. Lastly, for the athletic board, first thing I want to point out is I want to congratulate Mason Lewis, state champion in the 400 meters for the boys. I he also placed in the 100 and the 200. My daughter running track and being able to go to track meets where the boys and the girls were at the same meet, it was always exciting watching him run. I mean, along with a lot of the other boys running and and the girls running, but to watch Mason run in some of these events, to to see him be crowned as the 400-meter champion is is fantastic. And it would also, I would be remiss to point out that our girls team was Division One this year, competed in Division One, finished seventh in the district meet. We also, I think we were eighth in the regional meet, and when you look at the skills that we finished ahead of that are two or three times as big as us, we were one girl over the limit for Division Two. So to have us compete in Division One and do be so successful, including Sidney Smith and Maria Steinkie, who also who both made it to the state meet in the Division One, and Maria Steinkie in the 3200, and Sidney Smith in the discus, and the shot put, and Sidney finished second in the state in Division One, and the discus as a sophomore. So I wanted to point out those accomplishments. There was also the board four by 800 team relay team also made it to the states in Division Two boys. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that as part of my athletic board report. With that said, we've also had athletic board meetings. The last one I wasn't able to attend, but we had some good discussions that started a couple of meetings ago, and I believe that we have consensus on a proposal for policy IDGK. It won't, it isn't before the board this evening, but that will be coming. It talks about interscholastic extracurricular eligibility to be in compliance with OHSAA as well as our own our own policies and our own standards of what we are looking at for eligibility. I did note also, just kind of as a side note, and that that policy will come before the board. I think for you probably will go to the policy committee first and then before the board for first reading and second reading. The last thing is, as I noted, and in regard to that issue, just kind of as a side note, that due to the pandemic, I believe all athletes statewide are going to be eligible for fall season due to the pandemic and and due to the due to the issues of last year that no one would be found ineligible to compete in the fall, which I think is a good move by the OHSAA. With that said, that's all the reports that I have. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Varno. Ms. Minio?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. And I'll start with the business first. Okay, so House Bill 110 is the hot topic. I'm not going to go into big detail, but it's a lot about, it's looking at education vouchers or the ed vouchers, fair school funding, eligibility criterion, and the determining base cost per pupil. So if you need information about how to be an advocate or how to what's going on with that, I can give you more specific information. Ms. Snowden brought up the point about the the fact that we'll be switching from electronic meetings to live person, live meetings starting next month, because that's ending. Other things that are kind of in the hopper, I have House Bill 316. It's considering policy for high school students in regards to academic and athletic opportunities that maybe were kind of sidelined this year, that what that what that how that can open up next year. House Bill 298 is looking at the composition of the State Board of Education and House Bill 312. This is Kristen Boggs is working on this. There's a proposed proposed date of 11/23, recognizing women and girls in STEM. So that's that's what's going on. And that's what's going on in the legislation, but that's what's in the hopper there. And so turning the focus a little more like into our district. And so I'm happy to say that two of my three students finished the year just fine, and we've already launched our one into summer school. I'm very happy to report that everybody is happy where they are educationally at the moment, like whether they're in summer school or whether they're on there on summer vacation. But it's really, I just want to take the opportunity to thank everybody, every 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 person who made this year possible, the educators, the staff, the students themselves. It really was a year that we will really probably never forget. And to echo what Victoria said, I want to first of all, give congratulations to the class of 2021, the parents and the students and everybody who supported them. Victoria said it. It was amazing to see the students walk off that stage and approach Dr. Acton and shake her hand and say, thank you for inspiring me. Your words like mattered. Like that was just like such a moment of like, wow, like what a what a great group of kids like to to approach Dr. Acton and 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 express gratitude and and indicate they were listening. At their graduation, they could be looking around or doing whatever, but they were like listening and inspired. That really, I was inspired by graduation in a lot of ways. So I'm very appreciative for that. Victoria brought up, I hadn't even, I've been such a whirlwind. I didn't even think about the fact that this is our last meeting with Dr. Good. Leading the way, oh, my gosh, there aren't even words, Dr. Good, to like express my gratitude for all that you have done for us this year. But personally, I just will say that you've inspired me to think about how I look at things, how I frame questions, how I communicate out, and I'm super appreciative personally for the opportunity to work for you, but or work with you, but most definitely for the opportunity that know that the benefit that our students got from having you involved in our district this year. So much gratitude to you and to Mary Davis, too. All right, that's my report.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Mitchell?
I have for the board's consumption this evening. The BEF obviously celebrated graduation along with all of us and was able to award close to $21,000 in individual scholarships. That included $2,500 scholarships to two students from the Eli Weinstein Memorial Scholarship. They also provided each senior who was named a department award cup winner with a check for $250. The seniors received their alumni t-shirts and had music and food truck and ice cream, and that was all donated by the Alliance Pride Alumni Fund. And then I want to just take a moment to recognize the BEF. I told them this in our meeting last week or a couple of weeks ago now. But almost all of the grant scholarship awards that they were presenting for approval in the in the last meeting, the majority of them had some sort of diversity, equity, and inclusion piece or belonging to it, and it really gave me a deep sense of gratitude that all of the work that we have devoted in our district for a number of years has not been in vain, and to have our foundation, BEF Foundation, as dedicated and committed to that work was really, really wonderful to see. As far as the All for One Technology Campaign, BEF launched its first crowdfunding site that would allow any of us to set up their own fundraising, which can be for as small gifts to really large ones. The fundraising goals can be set and whatever your personal goal to really large ones. The fundraising goals can be set and whatever your personal goal is. And I can send you guys the link for that. I don't know that as board members, we're allowed to do, do a crowdfunding. So I have to check the legalities around that, Kyle and Marley. I'm not sure. And then even though everything slowed down for BEF right now, the office is still open. So if we need to reach Pam, we can. She's always available. And then I would like to just take a moment to thank sweet Mary Davis. Her smile has always greeted me when I came into the office in my very first attempt at board service, and it has never wavered and always been the same. Dr. Fine, I think you probably have already figured out she'll be a hard one to replace, but we'll keep our fingers crossed that that's going to definitely happen. Dr. Good, it has been so much fun getting to know you. Your energy is ridiculously contagious, especially when I think I'm, I've had enough. I'm tired. I have no more left in the tank. Then you come in with this like big smile and then you go, okay, well, if he can do it, surely we can. So I want to thank you for coming in and sort of steadying the ship that was getting weighed down at the time, just to provide some stability for both board, community, and the staff and the faculty. It was, it was huge. And we can't thank you enough and wish you the best as you go off to save and rescue another school district potentially. We need to get you a Superman cape. And then John already recognized our athletic accomplishments. I did want to mention because we kind of forgot that our girls softball team had a really, really great year as well. We, our students 2021 have really just faced a great deal of challenges and man, oh, man, oh, man. There wasn't anything they didn't put their mind to that they didn't deliver on. So they've got to feel really special and proud of themselves. And I'm excited to have been able to be in the company for just a few seconds, just to hear and see and and talk to some of them. So I wish them all the very best of luck. And that is all I have for today. Oh, I forgot. I almost completely forgot. At the request of Ms. Snowden, we, I don't know how often you guys read those OSBA communications that come across, you know, they they feel like junk mail coming to your mailbox. But I happened to click on it because it was an article about Henness Communications, providing crisis communications consultation services and what have you. And so I did a little digging into it at the request of Ms. Snowden, and I received from them their capabilities presentation that I'll pass on to the rest of the board. But I do think after talking with Marley, we both kind of came to a consensus together that it would be a really great time for us to revisit that conversation about what it is that we're looking for in terms of communication. It's always been something that as a board, we have often talked about. It's threaded through almost every single thing that we do. And so, Dr. Fine, you probably have figured out that that's probably a high priority for us as a district. And so I will pass that on to you as well, Dr. Fine, and allow you to take the lead on researching that a little bit more. And of course, if Ms. Snowden or if you request something of me to assist, I will. But to our board, I would just encourage all of us to maybe start thinking about what we're looking for in terms of communication, not just to each other, from administration to us, but outward communication to the community. And especially since we are so often in a position where we also need to be surrogates and advocates for what's happening in the district. So what does that look like, both as parents, community members, and then also as board members? And that's all I have today.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you looking into that a little bit. And I look forward to seeing what Dr. Fine's going to do with our communications. All right. And I just wanted, we don't have it on our agenda tonight, but I did want to include and welcome Quinn Hall, who is our new student body president. And Quinn, you want to just introduce yourself? Tell us a little bit about you.
Yeah, sure. My name's Quinn. I'm going to be an incoming senior next year. And I, as you said, I'm the student council president for Bexley High School. And as part of that, I'm honored to be selected as a student representative to the board. And I'm just really excited for the upcoming year. I know we've all like had a really hard year, or I guess a year and a half with COVID. And I think next year is going to be a really fun year for students. And I'm happy to be a part of it. So thank you.
Well, we're thrilled to have you. Thank you so much. We really look forward to the report from you each month and hearing what the students are up to. And it's why we do it. So we appreciate you being with us. All right. Thank you. So moving on, that takes us to our superintendent's comments tonight.
Good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to share about four items this evening. And the first, I too want to acknowledge our state track champion, Bexley High School sophomore Mason Lewis, who placed first in the state in the 400 meter race last weekend, registering an impressive time of 47.54 seconds. And here I thought it was hot stuff when I ran the 440 under a minute. It's, I don't even know what the 440 is.
I know.
It's good to know that Generation C is faster, smarter, and stronger. And speaking of stronger, sophomore Sidney Smith, congratulations. She was another state champion of Bexley High School this past weekend, placing second in the discus with a 131 foot, 10 inch throw. Remarkable. Congratulations, Sidney. And to top it off, Mason Lewis brought home third place in the state in the 100 meters. So both of these sophomores and certainly all of our athletes are really something to watch. Congratulations to them and to their coaches. Well done. So next, we're going to hear about the district's summer masking recommendations. First, I want to commend the students' parents because from what I observed yesterday and today, almost all of our elementary age participants are electing to wear masks indoors. So congratulations to them for making decisions that make sense for them and for their families. Dr. Harley Williams is here to share more about our summer masking protocols. Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Dr. Good. Good evening, board. Dr. Good asked me to share, and some of the parents asked us to talk about the why, how did we get to this point? And I think it's a great opportunity that we can, I like the opportunity to share how we came to a decision and the why behind it. Because it's not always, it's not always known to the public or to the board. But if Tyler would move on to the next slide, I'll start off by saying that just a little background is that you called it, we were looking at the beginning of the school year, and we're getting ready to go into hybrid learning. We had definitely a mandatory masking requirement for our students. And then when we became or moved to the all-in, we went to a double masking or equivalent standard. And that resolution, as you well know, expired on the last day of the school year, which caused us to have a conversation internally about what does it look like for summer? We were trying to work about four or five weeks out to get ready for the summer. We'll probably spend some time in July, getting ready for the start of the school year to see how things are and review some of the data. So basically, the, an executive leadership team meetings, Dr. Good, Ms. Abraham, myself have changed, we decided to change the masking mitigation plan for the summer school from required to strongly recommended, but not required. And I want to stop there and then really highlight this point, that is, do not interpret that statement in any way that we're acknowledging or announcing that somehow we're declaring this pandemic is now over. That's not the case, and that's not a position. And I do, like I said, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you some of the data behind our decision. And we are very aware that this is not over, and we do appreciate this opportunity. So, but let's talk a little bit here, is that, and I think it's important, too, that we recognize that as we're making these, this decision, Franklin County Public Health also announced that they were advising that Franklin County schools should wear a mask when inside. I think it's also that the case rate per 100,000 in Franklin County at that time was 102 per 100,000, while our case rate in Bexley at that same time was 29 per 100,000. So I think that's important. I want to highlight some things on the, I think Tyler's already got the slide there. And it's what's important about that, I think, is that in the summer, we were trying to figure all this out, looking at national, looking at international studies, Korea, South Korea, trying to find CDC, what they were saying, looking at our, and thank God, we had a lot of internal, or excuse me, community members that were experts in this that would help guide us and give us some feedback. But one of the things that I recall during that time is when we were doing some initial research about masking, because it's been a long time ago, but I recall a lot of people were concerned that kids could not wear masks to school, and that we shouldn't require kids to wear masks. And so one of the things that we were researching was, can they wear masks? What do the experts say? What do the doctors say about kids wearing a mask all day? Our research discovered that the World Health Organization at that time reported that children six, six and above should wear a mask when possible, that they were capable of doing so unless they had some underlying condition or or health issue that let them do that. And they also advised, the World Health Organization I'm speaking about, also advised that the decision to wear children aged six to 10, excuse me, six to 11, should be based on certain criteria, maybe five or six criteria were listed. Those I think are important to focus on and highlight today. And the first was whether or not there was widespread transmission in the area where the child resides was one criteria. And another criteria is specific settings, interaction the child has with other people who are at high risk or developing serious illness such as the elderly and those with underlying conditions, health conditions. And so, so let's look at the first, the first talk, first criteria we talked about is, what's the transmission like in our district? So as you can see on this slide, it's some of the data that we were pulling and examining, we were seeing, we didn't see the things that we thought we were going to see or feared that we might see after the winter holiday, after Super Bowl Sunday, after the national championship games and the parties that might occur at spring break, we were really kind of holding our breath, hoping that we didn't see things that kind of explode like some of the predictions were at the time. We didn't see that. And I think a lot of it had to do with the vaccinations were coming out at that time, or teachers were already vaccinated and things like that. So what I'm showing you now is the, the two-week case rates that's considered our catch data we've talked about before, for our zip code 43209. As you know, when people tested positive, they had to report an air zip code, and that zip code goes into a database, and then we're able to track on how many cases are happening, not necessarily within our school, but within our zip code, which students and that associate with the school, going to a private school, things like that. But it's everyone within our 43209. And you can see there that we started seeing a pretty serious decline. And then in the last report, in the last report, is we showed zero per 100,000. And that may price, that's probably statistically speaking is zero, but still very promising and very good news to share. As we said, we would always try to follow what the science and the data was telling us. And then the second criteria on that World Health Organization, when we were looking at that was, you know, the child interactions with the, with the elderly and the underlying health conditions. And I believe a lot of our efforts went into being a good community member. And that was the big fear back in August was that we had to protect our elderly, we had to protect our people with health, who are health compromised. We had heard then that children weren't receivers or transmitters as much as, as, as the adults were, and that their symptoms were milder when they have it. Now, it's not saying, it's like, you know, we, not, not something that, I don't know how to say this, we were, we were worried about a lot of things, the, the threats to children now was the silver lining. One of the silver linings in this whole thing, when we were all kind of panicked and really didn't know what to do, is that the information we had was that children were not a major threat of receiving or transmitting it, like the older population members, nor, and when they did have it, that they would be have more mild symptoms, and obviously less likely to have deaths or something, things like that. So universal mask wearing became mandatory across much of the United States and inside our schools and as a way to slow the spread of virus and protect our elderly until we could develop vaccines and get this under control. That's what we did. Tyler, if you move down the next slide, please. Thank you. And we've had, as you said, I've heard from a few, one of the couple of community members that were concerned about this position that we were taking, and mentioned that, you know, there's still a threat, and then there's still risk. And absolutely, I agree with that. I mean, there's risk in just about everything that we do. There's risk when the flu season, we unfortunately lose lives due to the flu. We put, take risks every time we get into an automobile. And that we have to kind of, in our position, we have to make decisions based on the level of risk compared to the level of education, because not getting education and things like that will obviously have a level of risk associated with this, too. But so I wanted to share a couple of things that's made us feel good about the safety of our children. And as you can see, it's, as of yesterday, the CDC reported a total of COVID deaths of over 583,000. Age five to 18 that reported 253 deaths so far. And again, I'll say, one death is too many, and it's unfortunate. So I'm not trying to diminish that number at all. I mean, for 250 families, that's tragic news. But I think statistically, seeking making decisions, you have to look at it kind of objectively as well. And then in Ohio, there's a similar proportion per capita. In Ohio, we were reporting almost 20,000 deaths related to COVID. And between the ages of zero and 19, there were only seven deaths in our state. And in both, in both situations, statistically speaking, that metric is considered zero percent, less, much less than 1%. And if I can move down, thank you, Tyler. And then other things that we were considering at that same time, a lot of superintents were having conversations in Franklin County about what to do, and most districts were reporting that they were, that within the Franklin County Public Health jurisdiction, at least, were indicating that Central Ohio Superintendent Association, I mean, they would recommend but not require masks of participants in summer school. Certainly, we're not followers here, and just because everyone else said that, we did that. But that, I thought that was interesting information, but it caused us to look at, which we have Franklin County saying we should, we have other peoples that we haven't. So we kept looking at some of our more local data. And in some places, maybe that's the right decision, some places it might not be, but we still feel in our situation, it's the right decision. So a couple of other things we looked at, we looked at the number of students 12, vaccine was moved down to 12 years old and above. We thought that was a powerful thing that takes, gives opportunity for a lot of our students to get vaccination. And again, we, we're not removing the mask or saying you can't wear a mask. People can make their decision to wear the mask, as Dr. pointed out, many still are. And we were making decisions that they could no longer, they had to wear masks outdoors for recess. And I know outdoors is different than indoors. But we watched that, and we watched close contact. And I went out the day, and I spent the day at Maryland, the first day that we did that, just to watch recess. And bless their hearts, they were having fun, running around, but they could not keep apart. And the best efforts is we were trying to do, and the teachers on duty were trying to do, that they were running and having a good time. So I thought this will be interesting to see what happens. Unfortunately, nothing happened, no increases occurred, anything like that. And the same thing happened with our spring sports. We had, you know, 323 students in the spring, again, mostly outdoors, almost, I guess they all were outdoors. And with, but in close contact, but certainly not within the three, three feet in a lot of sports, playing teams from, players from different teams and things like different communities. That was something else that was interesting to observe to see how that was going to happen. And no new cases reported, and thus we had no community spread during that time. Other things we looked at is we looked at our own personal data, and we had four students in the past nine weeks. Other things we looked at is we looked at our own personal data and we had four students in the past nine weeks who reported positive um, to us and two cases from the same family. And one case was later determined to be a false positive after we administered multiple other tests to that student. We also tested all of the athletes that student athlete was associated with and, and those students tested positive either. So we felt pretty confident that that was a false positive result. We've had zero staff report COVID positive since, since the vaccine, since spring break. Um, and we felt that summer school sessions have capacity limits, um, which allow for appropriate distance, smaller groups, classes, we could, we can control that a little bit easier than a all-in setting. And that, and again, we still put mitigation plans in place, like distancing when we, distancing is still required. And t- teachers are encouraged to meet outside when they can, things like that. And, and I think you'll see a lot of things from the COVID era, when this is finally over, will still be a part of our daily routines. Uh, I can see students eating outside and, and on the front lawn and their, on their yoga mats, or I can see that happening post-COVID. And, uh, and I hope it does. I thought, I, that was nice to see the little Bexley picnics occurring outside on, on nice days. Um, thank you, Tyler. A- as stated earlier, we know the pandemic is not over and this is not any indication to say, to suggest that it is by uh, making it a, a, a recommended, not required stance in terms of masking. Um, one of the great things we talked about too, we thought, we know how to do this now. This isn't August of 2020. We know how to get masks on, we know how to communicate it, should we start seeing things change? Um, and so I assure you that if we receive a Department of Health order, our CAT status starts changing, showing we're getting a lot of spread in our community, or if we start seeing spread within our summer school programs, it's not going to ta- it won't be, it won't be a hard to flip that switch and say, hey, masks are now required. We have plenty of masks here that we could give the families. They're used to wearing them here before. I don't see that being a hard transition, should we have to? And I, and I certainly hope we don't have to. But it's, it's, it's still a possibility. We have to be ready for it. And so I think it's important that we base decisions on the data that we have. And we're looking more locally now at our, at our data to make these types of decisions. So I'll close by saying it's extremely important that this still continues to be reported. Any positive case still must report to our online system. Um, and, uh, anybody, you know, we encourage anyone who has symptoms to stay home and get tested. And then, but again, keep, keep us informed and using the online reporting system, should you or any community member, uh, be tested positive for COVID. And with that, I will close my presentation and turn it back over to Dr. Good.
Thank you, Harley.
Dr. Good, can I ask a quick question? Uh, will we be requiring, um, families to report over summer if they have a case or no, since they're not in this school? We'll just get that data through CATs. I don't.
Now, they're still, we're still encouraging, we can never require that. And, uh, we're, we're still encouraging that, that they report to us. And then knowing that not everyone will or has to, because it's not required, but the CAT's data, when someone tests positive, that goes into a system and, and that is, um, it's
Available.
There's a lag, certainly there's a lag, but the data is, is probably more accurate than what we see on our online, not probably, it is more accurate than what we see on our online reporting.
Yeah, I, I was just curious about that, since we do have summer activities going on, uh, how, especially with athletics, where there are a little closer contact, but, um, that's great. Thank you. I'm sorry.
We're still required to report to Franklin County Public Health. Uh, our, our obligations are still the same over the summer. So any of our athletes, any of our summer school students, um, we're still required to, to file those reports with Franklin County Public Health.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Williams, I have one quick question to the PowerPoint cuts. I think Tyler took the PowerPoint down, but the very last bullet you had talked about, you know, what to do. Um, what, uh, my family had like a really positive experience with the rapid tests that were available. Do we still have those? And are they available like over the summer?
We do.
The protocol?
All you do is call me and ask for one over the summer. Ask for a few if you need to for your whole family.
Thank you.
Dr. Williams and Dr. Good, thank you for, uh, putting that together. I think that's important when we move. Um, and, and I think it's important as, as the, the team that you talked about, put this together and looked at our local data and made decisions for our district. So I wanted to appreciate the PowerPoint and you presenting that, Dr. Williams, that really helps for us as board members and the public that that stuff is available to see the why, because it is important. And, and I, again, I really appreciate both of the, your presentation, Dr. Williams and Dr. Good and, and, um, the, the small team that you put together to, to make these decisions. So I wanted to just make sure I, I said that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank, thank you, Harley. Um, as most of you are aware, uh, Bexley City Schools has had the great privilege of Harley's leadership for many years as a high school principal, and then more recently overseeing student and staff operations, which included athletics and extracurriculars, the annual school calendar, custodial services, food services, human resources, maintenance, property, safety and security, student help and wellbeing and so on. Harley is one of those who is always willing to rise to the next challenge. And we have a new significant challenge ahead of us, which he's going to describe in a moment. I appreciate Harley, his family, his friends and colleagues and our board and the community's support as we combined many of the employee relations functions that Harley led with those employee relations functions that existed in several other departments and created a new position to be led by Melissa Kloster-Minlando. And we know we can count on Harley to help mentor and support Melissa. But now he's going to describe what he'll be doing to keep that part of his role busy. Harley?
I'm coming on. Sorry about that delay. Yeah, uh, thanks, Dr. Good. And yeah, I, I look forward to the, the new, um, challenges to this, that's been cast my way and, um, certainly excited for, um, Melissa, uh, Kloster-Minlando. And, uh, we'll be helping her as much as I can, but, um, like I say, she's very capable and won't probably lean on me too much, but anytime she needs it, she certainly can. And again, I'd like to thank the board for your support, uh, of the office, um, of student staff operations, in which I, which I've held and, and continue to hold in some, in different ways. So I've enjoyed learning and growing as a director of these services. And now I'm looking forward to overseeing the district's efforts to address facility needs. Um, something that's been near and dear to me for a, a, a long time in both academics and athletics as for our district. Um, so in my new capacity and, and the new challenge I have is, is, it's leading the facilities and operations. I guess the title's been changed to Director of Facilities and Operations now. And I'll be continuing to provide oversight to our physical plant and many of the systems that help it run smoothly and safely. I still, uh, I will, um, I will still continue to work and supervise the athletics, extracurriculars and custodial and maintenance services, food services, uh, still be dealing with safety and security. And, um, now I'm excited to work with a new group of people, make some new friends as we work on the facility master plan development. At least I hope so. One of the primary contributors to this, this new work of facility master, uh, planning is the continued involvement of our business manager, John Ikenberry. Um, John has been a, his, and his expertise and institutional knowledge will be invaluable to me. And, um, he's led this work in the course in the past and we're appreciative of his willingness to continue to provide input and support uh, on this next phase of, of facilities de- uh, development. Um, like I say, this has always been near and dear to me, uh, this, this type of work. Um, we've always had a goal, whether as an administrator or aide or any, any person in this, in this building, we've always described them as, uh, safety compliance officers as, as part of their job duty. But it's always been a goal to keep our facility safe, uh, clean. We know our buildings are old, but it doesn't mean they have to look old. Um, and we want to make sure that they're maintained, secure and efficient. And, and our kids deserve that. Our community deserves that. And, and so, uh, with all the expectations, our buildings and ground support the educational needs of our students and programs of our professional learning community offers, uh, to maximize their development. That's, that's our task. And we cannot, we cannot ignore the growing requirements, including costs to provide such a campus. Um, yeah, we have ongoing repairs and it's frustrating. I'm sure you as a board had to be frustrated. I sit back in our office and look and say, we have to spend that money again on this. Well, the, the fact of the matter is our buildings are old and they're having, uh, repair problems. And it's, and it's, they have to be fixed. These aren't things that we want to do or luxuries. These are things that are, are requirements. And so, uh, as you can see, one of the things that, you know, we, we spent so much time and energy on the roofs of, of, of our school, but lo and behold, every year after the first melt, I've got Coach Leland or Coach, uh, Phillips calling me saying there's water coming in all over our gymnasium floor. And then we have to, we do dribbling drills around 55 gallon, uh, garbage cans, but it's collecting water from the ceiling. So that's the only way the kids can use the gym floor. So, um, so I guess we have to ask that question. Um, what is it? Patch, replace, you know? Um, and I think that's the purpose of our master plan. We need to find out what our community values, set some priorities with the community and then begin some work and planning, um, what that master planning might look like. And so as one of my first actions, I guess in this new role, um, one of the things we have to pay attention to is, is enrollment trends. Um, and, and how that enrollment impacts class offerings. Um, every class needs to have a place to go. And so when our numbers increase and we have to create a different section, additional section to accommodate those students, where are they going to go? We have finite resources, uh, and we're doing our best to try to be creative in our solution process. But I'm seeing some concerns that have been announced. They're not new. We've talked and worried about them for a few years. But just to give you an idea, um, we were, we were pretty tight three years ago. And in 2021, we added, um, fifth grade classes at Maryland and Cassingham. And it, and a second grade class, another second grade class at Cassingham. That's three additional classrooms. And, and I, I gotta assure you, in 20, in 2019, 2020, we didn't have three classrooms sitting empty. Um, and then this year, we're adding two sections, one at Cassingham and one at Maryland in third grade. And again, this year, we didn't have classrooms sitting open. So we're coming, we're thinking creatively, we're coming up with spaces and we're doing our best to can it make sure that these kids have a proper, uh, learning environment. Um, and so, so if you take a look at the cha- we, we'll take a look at the changing demographics of our community. Where families with school age children are buying or renting homes, where residential and commercial building permits have been approved, what zoning changes are occurring and how birth rates, uh, changed. And, and I know, uh, Brad Pettit, it, it's collecting data on, on student verification forms behind the other under, uh, children in a household of our students that are under age fives that we know they're coming. Um, things like that. We, it's not an exact science, but we, we, we try to study. One of the nice things though is we are landlocked. There's always so much, uh, so many available apartments and houses in our community. So it's not like we're a Pickerington or all in Tangi, that's just going to keep growing, growing, growing. We have to guess. But we can, we can, we can do some estimating, um, with the numbers that we have. Um, at the same time, and it's important too, we, we, and I'm looking forward to this part of it as much as anything else, working with our community partners and about their present occupancy, capacity and physical plant needs and, uh, anticipated physical plant needs. Um, partners like Capital University, City of Bexley, um, Columbus School for Girls, Jewish Community Center, Ohio Dominican, uh, Trinity Seminary, um, St. Catherine's. These are all potential partners, uh, we, that we will look at to see, you know, what opportunities they might have to help us address some of the needs that we're facing short term, uh, that might become long-term, um, partnerships as well, depending on our situation. We'll also determine what our immediate needs are, because that can't wait. We know in August, we're having a bunch of students coming to school. We know we're going to have two more classrooms at it. We, so we really can't wait. Um, and so, um, we're, we're always looking about how we might reconfigure, reconfigure existing spaces, possible lease opportunities or rental opportunities is, is, do they exist? Uh, for example, if we, you know, if we move, let's say the district office from the Cassingham complex, uh, put them in modules outside in, in, in the playground area or something like that, just hypothetically speaking. And, and would that provide enough room for a class or two? Um, and I don't know the answer to that, but those are the kind of questions that'll help guide our discussion. Um, and, and like I say, it takes a, a lot of bad ideas to be tossed around. Sometimes they get a good idea. And so we're going to be collecting a lot of ideas to try to come up with creative solutions to help us in the short term. So just as an illustration of one thing that, that's, that was the most recent conversation that we're having right now is, uh, we're trying to find a place for elementary music at Cassingham Elementary School. The past year, we, we utilized the, the music room at Cassingham had to be repurposed to, to, to hold a classroom. Um, and Mr. Manchester, um, can't thank him enough for his flexibility and creative problem solving and what he does. Um, for students, he graciously, graciously took to the Cassingham stage to conduct his music classes. Um, they're fine. It's, it's not probably the classroom he would prefer, but it's, it, it works. Um, and so, you know, it's, it's not, but it's not ideal. The lighting and storage of equipment, you know, has to go back and forth. Sometimes they get things, uh, it's, it's, it's not conducive to using the space as a classroom. It's a stage, right? But that's what, that's what we have. Uh, and so again, Bill has been, like I said, gracious and, um, and, and so has our theater director, Becky Reinhardt. Um, they, we spend a lot of time at the end of the year trying to coordinate all the theater performances, all the choir concerts and orchestra and band concerts. And we try to put that down with our athletic department, athletic director so that, um, we try not to schedule over top of each other events. Because I remember when we, 10 years ago, I used to have Jalen Robinette flying in from a, a football game to try to get into a concert because we had scheduled on the same night. And so we've tried to avoid those for the sake of the kids and, and take some of the stress off of students. Um, but, and, and then so they, they made accommodations. Um, and we'll continue to the, uh, uh, we, we are going to continue to, uh, use the auditorium uh, for one more year this way. But since we know we'll likely be adding an additional grade level classrooms next year, the solution certainly does have a shelf life. And so, as I said, we're so appreciative of our staff working together to help find these temporary solutions. And that, but I, I do believe now is a time that we begin to taking a comprehensive look at our facilities, both from the school's pers- perspective and with respect to our partners' anticipated needs as well. This is not a request for funding, uh, so please don't, uh, interpret this, any of our viewers out there, um, other than to contract with specialists, uh, that, that understand facility planning and, and they can conduct deep analysis of our present, future programs and participants and compare those to our current physical plant structures. I think that's what we need now. We're certainly not asking for a bond issue or anything like that, but just, just funding to, to, to hire some experts in that help us guide us in these conversations, see what is possible, what is not. Um, just for a little perspective, I could get, I wanted to give everyone a little history lesson. Um, below you'll see what the year of each building was built. And, uh, and I, and for the sake of time, I won't play a game, but I will tell you who the president was at the time each building was built. So Montrose was built in 1921. Warren Harding was president. Cassingham Elementary was built in 1927 and Calvin Coolidge was president. B, BHS was built in 1931. That was under Herbert Hoover. And Maryland Avenue was built in 1950. Harry Truman was president at that time. And Bexley Middle School, that's a hard one to find in our records. So that, because I think it was kind of patched together over years, but we landed on 1960. And at that time Dwight Eisenhower was our president. So.
Harley, you should have made that a quiz for us. That would have been a lot more fun.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't remember any of them, but, um, get, just to give you an idea, on the age of our building, Yeah, I, I don't, I don't remember any of them. But just to give you an idea, on the age of our buildings, but, and I will say another shout out to our maintenance and custodial team. Cause you walk in here, it doesn't look like these buildings are this old. The floors sparkle, the lockers shine. It's clean and, and it can be deceiving, but when you come to having to repair these facilities, that's when it starts catching your attention and the money that we have to put in to repair is something we need to consider. And maybe that is what we continue to do, but it's, it's worth a conversation with our community, I believe. So this type of community collaboration takes time. So I guess my ask is that the board consider reinstating our facilities work and strategic planning with our community. As we plan it, it is imperative that we learn from our community, their values and their priorities. And as these will guide our work, we know buildings do not last forever despite how well our, our maintenance custodial teams keep them clean and safe. But we feel it's our moral obligation to begin planning for our future facility needs today. So with that, I will close and turn it back over to Dr. Good.
Very good. Thank you, Harley. And thank you, Board, for, for listening to that presentation. And happy birthday Harley to you in just a few hours. Finally, in many ways, I felt as though the last nine months were kind of my gestation period in Bexley City Schools. I've loved getting to know this community and its elected Board of Education faculty and staff. So while under different conditions, I'd be ready to give birth to a new year. I need to remind everyone, I am an interim. That's what I do. Now, I'll be at the interim gig turned into five years in Columbus City Schools, but my job is really to get a system ready for its next. And now I am very, very proud to turn over a district which is nearly returned to normal, to a new parent, a highly qualified, very enthusiastic and much, much younger leader, Dr. Jason Fine. So tonight, Jason shares with us an update on one of our most important initiatives, which is not only a personal mission for me, but a professional priority for the board. And that is the work around diversity, equity and inclusion, or what is quickly becoming known as a belonging orientation. Dr. Fine?
Thank you so much, Dr. Good. I want to echo all of the earlier sentiments about the work and the gracious offerings of support. I am honored to be working beside a legend and has been incredibly helpful. And I know that he will not be far as we continue this journey. And I'm going to continue to lean on Dr. Good as we move forward. Also want to acknowledge the thoughts about Mary Davis. She is obviously a superstar. That, that one hurts. And she has been incredible in helping us prepare for finding a really solid replacement. She is amazing. And we appreciate the work that she's done as she transitions out and supports us. So I want to thank the board before we get started. The board again has been phenomenal and is committed to this work. This work is really important. And as we get going, full disclosure, I do not typically read word for word on a PowerPoint. And PowerPoint 101 tells you do not put a bunch of words on the presentation. But I felt, and Tyler, if you want to move us along to that next or first page, this information is too important for me to, to miss. And it's too important for me to try and give my own thoughts off the cuff because the work is really important and it has been very impressive, the work that has been done. So I want to talk about the work where we've been. I want to talk about where we are right now. And I want to talk about some of the work that we're doing moving forward. So I am going to read and I'm going to add some thoughts as I go, but I want to make sure that we don't miss the important pieces of the work that's been done throughout this district. So during the 2021 school year, staff, students, parents and community members joined together to advance the district's diversity, equity and inclusion efforts. All of the accomplishments this year are a direct result of collaborative and cohesive efforts to cultivate a district-wide culture of inclusion and respect for all individuals. Notably this year, the district established a DEI task force to set and strategically accomplish goals with measurable action steps. Included in that work was the development of language on DEI for the Board of Education to consider incorporating into future district policies. I want to make a quick comment about that DEI task force. That is a task force that was roughly 20 members deep. That consisted of students, staff members, family members, alumni. And that work was led, as you know, by Lysan Smith. As she exited in January, our amazing superstar, talk about a superhero, Raquel Armstrong, our middle school principal, took over that leadership of that group and has done a fantastic job moving that group along. The next slide for me, please. Student voices have been and will continue to be instrumental in guiding the district's work as well. In fact, student input and feedback was instrumental in the completion of a grade six, 12 English language arts curriculum audit. Bexley High School students also participated in the student leadership research collaborative led by Dr. Keith Bell through OSU. Students explored and shared their findings with administration on the topics of belonging and equitable access to resources. That audit that was completed, that is going to drive some of the work that we're doing as we move forward. Also, you'll hear me use the name Steve Shapiro. He also worked closely with Keith Bell. And I think there were roughly five students with that work. They did a fantastic job of creating a survey about racial disparities. And I believe if I had the number correct, I think 280 or so students completed that survey, which is, which is impressive. Staff members engaged in meaningful monthly conversations through professional development. The district-wide school climate committee facilitated monthly professional development in each school and staff participated in a district book read of So You Want to Talk About Race. Faculty, staff and administrators participated in implicit bias training through the Kerwin Institute. So I want to also acknowledge that I believe last summer, the leadership team in Bexley also participated in weekly conversations about that, around that book, So You Want to Talk About Race. And I want to comment on the monthly conversations. This is probably for me, having lived a world of COVID in the last year in the building level. Most of our day-to-day staff meetings, we, we would have monthly staff meetings. And those staff meetings typically resolved around, revolved around trying to just survive the moment of, of COVID protocols and those sorts of things. This district's ability to commit to monthly conversations with those groups to dig in to this work shows a great commitment of the staff members and the community. And hats off to our incredible staff members. I've talked to a lot of people over the last few weeks and we talked about the strengths of this district. And without doubt, every time I have a conversation about the, the ultimate strengths in this district, it comes back to our teaching staff. So kudos to you all for, for digging into this important work on top of dealing with COVID protocols. Tyler, if you'll keep us moving. The Bexley Education Foundation, the Bexley Minority Parent Alliance and the other community and nonprofit organizations have also been invested in integral partners in the district's continued work. For example, Harper's Corner donated hundreds of books featuring diverse authors, characters and families to Bexley Elementary Libraries. Also this year, Brian Drury from the Bexley Minority Parent Alliance and Jana Clark, our literacy coach, were both awarded a Bexley Education Foundation grant, grant to fund $8,550 for multicultural books for our fourth and fifth grade classrooms. Super excited for us to announce that those books have been ordered. They should be here in time for us to start the next school year. And I want to make sure we acknowledge those two organizations, the Bexley Education Foundation and the Bexley Minority Parent Alliance. This work does not happen as you start to hear these, these, where we've been, where we are and where we're headed. The work does not occur without the commitment, the dedication with, and collaboration with those two groups. So a huge thank you. Effective DEI work cannot happen without community participation and involvement. This year, parent institute sessions were devoted to topics of equity, implicit bias, microaggressions and white privilege. The district is also partnering with the Central Ohio Equity Network and Columbus Community Coalition for DEI to continue to learn from others in the community and share ideas. And as we've lived through this world of COVID, I think having opportunities for our families to zoom in gave us the ability to connect with more families in these types of opportunities. And I know Lysan Smith was able to offer a three-part series on equity bias, microaggressions and white privilege. And I think she was able to reach further than maybe we would have had been able to had we not found those technological supports. As the district looks ahead, so now I want to talk present, where we are right now to continuing with these initiatives in the new school year and beyond, Bexley Schools is beginning the interview process with individuals interested in serving as the leader of diversity, equity, inclusion. So before I start and explain a little bit about where we are, huge thank you to, again, Stephen Shapiro and Jill Abraham. Those two have done a phenomenal job of digging in and creating a process that has been really helpful in helping us identify some really strong candidates as we move through this process. Just so, an update for the board as to where we are. I believe we had roughly 56 candidates that had applied for the position. I do not believe we had any internal interest in the position. Through a pre-screening process, we were able to get that 56, those candidates from 56 down to 11. We reached out to those 11 highly qualified candidates and we asked them to provide us with a prompt, a one-page prompt or a one-page response, which was basically a letter that we asked them to provide to the community, asking them what they would do, what two to three initiatives they might perform in the first year in the position of being the leader of diversity, equity, inclusion. We worked with some community members and leadership team members yesterday and today to screen through that work. One candidate had dropped out, so that took us down to 10. I am in the process starting tomorrow. I'm going to be doing phone screen interviews with several of these candidates. And our goal is to get those down probably to three highly qualified candidates that next week we will put them in front of three interview processes. One will be with community members, one will be with staff members. And then the third will be an act, will actually be an activity that they will work through with our students, middle school and high school students. So we're excited to learn more about our candidates and I'm really excited to find a really good fit for the work that's ahead of us. So the leader of diversity, equity, inclusion will continue to strategically address cultivating a culture of DEI in Bexley City Schools. Part of their work will include overseeing the equity audit, leading the DEI task force, assisting the formation of additional student groups and clubs and implementing a social studies curriculum review. And I think the last slide will wrap out where we currently are. This person will also support the Ohio Department of Education grant to address diversifying the education profession in partnership with BMPA and BEF. In addition, this position will be tasked with partnering the instructional coaches to embed culturally responsive instructional strategies in the classroom and collaborate with staff on ongoing PD. We still are hoping that community members, staff members received an email as well. The Google form that is here, it's also been communicated in our newsletters and in an email to staff. We've had some great suggestions from community members and staff members on possible questions for our candidates. And a wonderful range of themes have emerged. So in closing, I want to talk about where we're headed. The next steps for next year, and this is, this is not limited to just this list. There are a lot of great opportunities. And obviously we want to lean on that person that we bring in for the leader of diversity, equity, inclusion to, to guide us as we move forward as well. But here are some, some things that you've probably seen and heard already. One of the things that I'm, I'm really excited about, that first bullet, Raquel Armstrong has graciously agreed to lead the leadership team through this work this summer or early into the fall. She's also going to work with our, the leader that we just talked about. We are, our district team is participating in the summer institute with Harvard University. That is happening in late July. That is a virtual presentation. We have a timeline to begin district equity audit and plan for implementing outcomes, embedding culturally responsive instructional strategies with the support of our instructional coaches. As we mentioned earlier, we're going to move forward with our social studies curriculum review. And our last slide talks about the formation of BARP as a middle school student club, bringing that down to the middle level. Formation of Bexley uniting and mobilizing opportunities for joy and academic success as a student group for black girls in grade six through 12. I believe Raquel Armstrong is also guiding us through that work. Looking at committees for diversifying the education profession and outlining recruitment and retention strategy in partnership with BEF and BMPA. And the last two, formation of a student group for future rising educators and a plan to reconvene Bexley's task force. So I know that's a lot of information, but like I said at the beginning, it's information that is critical to the, the work that has been done. I'm impressed by this community's work. It is critical that we honor what we've done in the past and that we remain committed to the work ahead of us. So thank you to the Board of Education for your commitment in this area. Dr. Good, I'll hand it to you.
Thank you, Dr. Fine. We have just six more presentations. I'm kidding. We don't. I do want to thank Dr. Fine and congratulations to the board. Bexley City School soon changes from good hands to the finest of hands. And I wish you well. And I'm certainly committed to supporting your and Bexley's continued success. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Good and Dr. Fine and Dr. Williams. Lots of good work going on here. All right. So we now move on to the approval of items three B through O. Can I have a motion to approve items three B through O?
So moved.
A second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments for Dr. Good?
I just want to give a shout out on the handbook that we're doing for the second reading tonight. I had a chance to get through that and want to commend Dr. Boyle for all of the work that she did with that handbook. It's really outstanding. The details, the thought, the straightforwardness. It's just a great, a great addition. And so I just want to say thank you for that.
Anything else?
I know that we're doing first reading on the volunteer handbook and the athletic handbook. This is more of a question than a comment. There are a couple of things in both of those that I saw that I was curious about and changes. Who should those questions be directed toward? Should it be Eli or who for the athletic and then for the volunteer handbook?
You send those questions to me.
Send those to Dr. Williams first. Eli reports after him.
Okay. Same thing with the volunteer handbook, parent volunteer handbook. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you. So this is the first, these are personnel matters. Mr. Smith, will you please call the role?
Mr. Barno.
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Powers.
Yes.
Ms. Snowden.
Yes. Thank you very much. All right. So that moves us on to the portion of our agenda tonight for our treasurers comments.
Thank you, Ms. Snowden. I think I'll, I'll begin by repeating some of the comments made about Mary Davis. This position is not under my house, but is one that I work very closely with. Close, probably closer than a lot of other positions. And that's not, that's true in a lot of districts as well. But Mary is a tremendous employee and person and my heart breaks that she's leaving, but excited for her, her next step and looking forward to staying in touch with her. In addition to that, I am also sorry to see Dr. Good leave. When I first started doing my research on him, as we all do, when we get someone new, the, the comments told to me were, were true, that he would be a friend, that I would enjoy working with him. And he's an incredibly intelligent man. So those all came true. And I thank, thank him for being a part of this tough year and the way to, to step into what we all were facing. He did it with grace. And it was, it was a pleasure to watch him work with us and be a part of our team. And to take a step back into the personnel items, you approved a hire in my office for the fiscal specialist, Jennifer Well or Jenny. So in my office, we have names that start with J or K. So I wanted to keep that, replacing Joan with Jenny. I kid, but my office did kid me about that when we went with Jennifer. But she, she's coming from Worthington Schools in their payroll, payroll department of 13 years. So as you've heard me say many times, you don't mess with payroll. So I, I don't mess with payroll. And when I get a chance to get a backup for payroll, I will. So we're excited to have her start on June 21st. There'll be a little bit, bit of overlap with Joan. So we're excited to that, for, for that little bit of training. But Jenny brings great knowledge and experience and a great attitude to, to our little hallway of a team. and a great attitude to, to our little hallway of a team. Finally, on the, on the monthly report, going to the agenda items, not, not anything too new. Revenue really hasn't changed this month. As I've said, every May and June, May and June are our big deficit months where we rely on previous month's revenues to, to live off of. So revenue really hasn't changed too much. And then the same story that I've been saying for a while is personnel expenditures have been looking better as well as retirement and insurance benefits. However, June is also the most expensive month when it comes to personnel and insurance, or I'm sorry, salaries, because we pay a lot of supplementals that were going on through the whole year. Individuals elect to have those paid out at the end. And I don't blame them because they'll use those for summer vacations or, or summer housework. So we do, we do have rather large, large payments go out in, in June. So I do expect that number to, to go down a little bit. Additionally, on the agenda tonight, our donations, I want to say thanks to the Bexley Education Foundation. They comprise most of those donations as a very important partner in what we do here. And then finally, the Bexley Public Library budget, tax budget. While they, their, their books are not ours, the way they are set up under the Ohio Revised Code, we are kind of the approving authority of that tax budget as well. Just like we approve board, board members that sit on their, their board. This is just another little procedure that we have to follow for their tax budget. That's all I have for this evening. Any questions? And I think I may have failed to say that, or welcome Dr. Fine to, to the family. He and I have a little bit of history. We, we share a little bit. Our paths may have been different, similar, but different. Upper Arlington and then also in our undergraduate degrees. I may have followed his footsteps a little bit down, down in Athens. But always good to have a familiar face and friend back. So I don't know if I said that last month or not. That was a five-year forecast month, so that was kind of on my mind, but that's it.
Thanks, Kyle.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we are now moving on to approval of items four B and proof four G. Have a motion to approve items four B through G.
Some, some of it.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Kyle, just for our record, would you please strike through the, the notation of four H that says approve items four B and four G? It should be, we just approved items four B through four G.
Yeah, I did notice that as we.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Then moving on to our public participation. Do we have any community members with us tonight who are here to give public comment? Mr. Smith, do you know, or Mr. Phil, do you have?
The one person, the, the one person that submitted their desire to speak is, is not in attendance.
Okay. Is there, just to make sure, because it's hard for me to see in the participate, in the participants, to put all names together. Is there anybody who thinks that they're here? If you can raise your hand for public participation. Just want to make sure we don't lose that opportunity if somebody wants to speak. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phil. All right. So that moves us on to any other matters that properly come before the board. And the one that I have that I just want to mention while we're all together so we can plan is our annual Fourth of July parade, which I'm super excited that we get to do. It's one of the best traditions, in my opinion, in Bexley. And I'm really looking forward to it. And so I wanted to see, in the past, we have marched. I've already talked to Dr. Fine about it. He, and hopefully some of his family are all in. So we're going to need to find trucks, etc. I think we'll probably need to, but I thought I would just check with you all and see if anybody has plans to be here for Fourth of July or maybe does not have plans. We all just want to jump in.
I'm planning, I was planning to participate. Marley, we have our families join us this year. We, we've always done it, like, just us. And that becomes kind of a production when the husband is on duty. So that's why I'm asking.
I might bring a few Rugrats with me, is what I'm saying.
Absolutely. I figure any family, if they're willing to take marching alongside of us, then I'm more than happy to have them.
Victoria, are you? I plan on being there. I'm sorry. I plan on being there. Do we have, I know in the can't remember whoever's in charge of the parade to get us.
Different every year. Is anybody interested in coordinating our Fourth of July parade efforts through the city?
I can do it.
All it is, is I think we just have to, we just have to, whoever the person is in charge of the parade, we just have to say, hey, the school board plans on, on being involved. And then, I mean, we could reach out for Dr. Fine as well. I don't know. I think it's just saying, hey, we plan on doing it. And then they assign us a number in the parade.
And a place. Yeah.
Yeah. I'd start with Barb Greiner at Parks and Rec. If she's not the person, then she'll kill me. If she's not the person. She will send each the right person.
Yeah, I thought they have a committee or something for the Bexley celebrations or something.
Yeah, that's right. It'll be the Bexley celebrations.
Marley, I talked to Mayor Kessler at the, the pot party this past weekend. And he is aware that I think we're, I said I'd be happy to walk with the board or however that works. And I think it was Mike Price with Parks and Rec, Mr. Price. He suggested that I probably ride so that there can be a label so that people know who I am.
Yeah.
If I'm walking, that probably gets missed, but I'm.
You just wear a sandwich board.
Well, I thought maybe Dan could walk behind me with a sign.
Like that. Father New, Father Time and Baby New Year.
I'm looking told not to run out of candy, so.
I think Tim Madison is the head of the Celebration Committee for the Fourth of July. So he, he would know. And we just need to find a, a truck or a, a car for Dr. Fine. And then will we have a second truck? Is that what we're thinking, Marley?
No, we've done that in the past. It is kind of nice to have two, like you're saying. So one says Dr. Fine Superintendent and one says Bexley Board of Education. It doesn't have to be a truck if we're all out walking. You know, Snowden family has one truck that we can use. So we can, we can go from there.
I'm happy to walk. I don't, I don't mind walking.
I think.
All right.
Yeah. Well, I think in the past, the trucks been nice. There's some kind of support's been nice so that we don't have to, like, carry.
The entire. Definitely need, yeah.
The entire load of candy.
Yeah.
And we got water bottles and stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. So yeah, Alicia, why don't you just send us out, you know, an email and let us know what makes the most sense and we'll coordinate.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So are there any other matters that properly come before the board? Okay. We do not have executive session tonight. So before our adjournment, I just want to give one last final shout out to Dr. Good and appreciation for his positive energy and collaborative nature. Dr. Good hates analogies. And I'm not sure, Dr. Good, if you hate them because you say you're not good at them or if you just hate them in general. So I apologize if it's just because you hate them in general. Because here's my analogy for you. I said when COVID hit us like, you know, a ton of bricks to the face last March, that I kept saying to our board and our administrative executive leadership team that we're all on this lifeboat together. And we have got to protect each other and conserve our resources and make sure we're looking out for each other at all times because it's going to be really, really rough seas. And it was a very delicate balance. And when we had one member jump ship, we had somebody else come on and bring us, I felt like each a life vest. And then you went about patching things up for us and buoying our spirits and sending our boat onto the right path in safer seas. And I just cannot express my, my sincerest gratitude for, for helping us all through what is without a doubt the most difficult time in education in this last year. So thank you, thank you for all that you've done for us and for pointing us in a direction that, that showed us who our next leader should be. Your, I think your leadership really gave us great insight to what we were looking for. And we found that with Dr. Fine. So welcome to Dr. Fine and thank you, Dr. Good, very much for, for, for being our little lifesaver. All right. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Good night all.